Here we go. We're on.
Good morning, welcome to the Muscatine County Board of Supervisors meeting for Monday, July 2nd. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Our first order of business is to review the agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
We have a motion by Jeff to approve. Second by Matt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next is to receive comments from the public. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the matter on a topic that is not on the agenda? Please step to the microphone, speak your name and address. Seeing none, we'll move to item number four, which is discussion and possible action to approve claims dated July 2nd, 2018, in the amount of $197,769.48.
Move to approve.
Has been moved.
I'll second it.
And seconded. All those in favor of approving claims?
Aye.
Aye. The motion is passed.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to make a note that out of the $197,769.48, that seemed like Tyler was the big, uh, Tyler Maintenance Program was 104, 161, is that correct? That's what I see on the paperwork. That was a big chunk of that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Sherry.
Give a question about that, Bob.
Well, I just, I knew it was coming, but it's amazing it, it took up over 50% of, you know, expenses for that one. Pretty high. Thank you.
Next up, item number five. Item's with Community Services Director Kathy Anderson Noel. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, everybody. All right. Just like to start with a brief overview of our financials and where we're at at the end of May. You know, the June figures are just now coming in, so this is at the end of May. And for our mental health budget, our year-to-date expenditures are $1,388,956.84, which amounts to 77% of the total budget. So, we anticipate ending the year under budget. Current fund balance as of May 31st is $1.2 million. So, we're, we're in good shape right now. Our general assistance budget at the end of May, our year-to-date expenditures were $410,0191. We're at 82.4% of our budget with our balance of $87,584. For mental health, so that's our financials just in a nutshell. Any questions on that in general?
Should I have gotten paperwork on that like usual?
You did.
I did, there should have been.
It was on our board packet.
Okay, I'll find it. Thank you.
Kathy, on the, on the fund balance on the mental health spend?
Yes.
Is that, are we at the 20% or where are we at?
Oh, we're way abo-, we're, we're quite a bit above the 20%.
Cause that would be about a sixth, right?
Right. Yeah, we're, we're way above that. It's anticipated during fiscal year 19, we'll be spending that down. And at, probably after the first of the year, we'll probably have to draw some money down from the regional pot to cover expenses, which is anticipated. And I'll be working with Sherry and we'll be working with David Farmer on that.
So, we didn't, we didn't make any, was this the budget year or is it next budget?
It's 20.
It's in the, it's-
If you buy one budget is where we levy access.
Zero.
Right.
Okay. So, we haven't seen the reduction of the drawdown from us yet.
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions, general? Okay. Talking about mental health, for the month of May, we had 19 commitments and we're averaging around 20, 21 commitments a month. So far, for the year, I believe we're at 227 commitments, which is about where we were this time last year. Not really seeing a lot of dent in anything in, in those, but of those 19 commitments we saw in May, we had eight mental health, two substance, four dual, and five 48-hour holds. So, of those 19 commitments, nine were ended up, ended up hospitalized out of the region. Three were at St. Luke's, which is, you know, bordering our region. Three were at the University, which again is bordering our region. One in Dubuque, which isn't too far out of the region. And then, we had one at Mercy and Council Bluffs and one at Spencer. So, we had two that traveled pretty far out of the region. We did have one that went to, was able to go to, over to Rock Island. And that's, you know, that's been helpful to us so far. We haven't seen a lot, but we've had some. And it depends on their availability, too.
So, so the Robert Young Center opening that up has had nominal effect. We still are sending a couple people.
We are.
We are in the region.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, that's pretty much the same that we're seeing with the other counties as well. So, it's helping some.
Does that indicate just a general lack of beds in this part of the state?
Absolutely.
Don't we still have new beds gonna be opening up within the next year or two?
Well, but in about another year and a half, and that would be the Strategic Behavioral Health in Bettendorf, and that will be a 72-bed facility. And they broke ground in that with, for that in April. So, you know, it'll, it'll be a while yet before we see any benefit from that.
Is that a private pay only? That's-
No, they, they will accept Medicaid.
They will.
That's what they're saying, so we'll see.
Kathy, that agreement we've had with Illinois, we said we have one this month?
One this month.
Do you know how many, roughly, totals we've had this year?
Um, I think we've had, we've had at least two, and, and of course juveniles have been able to go over there for quite some time, just the adults. This is new since January 1. And it depends on their availability, you know, and sometimes with any hospital, not just Robert Young, but with any hospital, it's not always just the beds that are available, it's whether they have the staff to handle the patients there, too. So, you've got a couple of factors.
Sure, while we had, it was difficult, I believe Genesis not having their, their bed staff, is that correct? Have they remade that situation?
Apparently, they have. We've, we've seen a lot of people go to Genesis this past, um, I don't have it on my list here, but we do see a lot of people going to Genesis. You know, sometimes what we see with Genesis is they're often discharged after the three days. And, you know-
Is that problematic, or?
It could be, it could be. Sometimes there's, uh, and this maybe isn't just specific to Genesis, but sometimes three days isn't really long enough to get somebody stable.
Can they be held longer than that?
They can be, absolutely. The, um, what happens is with a commitment, the doctor files a report, the doctor evaluates somebody while they're there for that 72 hours, and makes a recommendation on whether that person can have, you know, is appropriate for outpatient treatment, if they need continued hospital treatment, or if they need no treatment at all. Generally, most of our commitments that we see, you know, from anywhere, the recommendation is often outpatient treatment. And sometimes what, you know, recommendation is, okay, they need some type of a step-down facility. Right now, folks often go to a residential care facility. And what, you know, House files 2456, you know, one of the things were crisis stabilization centers and step-down, you know, acute care, not acute care, but a step-down unit from a hospital. You know, maybe somebody's still not acute, and the definition is they're suicidal, homicidal, danger to themselves or others, and that can be very broadly interpreted. So, you know, yeah, maybe they're saying, okay, no, I'm not gonna hurt myself, I'm not gonna hurt anybody, but they're still very ill, and they, they need continued care of some type. And so, sometimes we see people going to a residential care facility for, you know, maybe a couple of weeks, and then hopefully being able to transition back into the community.
Thank you.
Okay. Trust, our trust program is busy as ever. We have 228 active cases in our trust program. We're seeing that number increase each year. Just got a few numbers here. Just as a comparison, in fiscal year 17, we had 210 active cases. Fiscal year 15, 16, 202 active cases at the end of the year. And 14, 15, we had 106, 86 active cases. So, you know, we are seen as the leader in this program, especially within our region. And also, the other factor that we're seeing is a lot of your providers that have previously done protective payee services are no longer doing that because the reimbursement from the state for their total SCL program, they're doing it as part of their SCL, and they're not getting reimbursed enough to continue to do that. So, we've had a number of referrals from providers saying, we're getting out of the business, we're not doing that. And we're currently working on, for some cases that we're already Guardian and Conservator for, we're working on 10 payee applications.
How many cases do you handle in the guardianship and conservator services?
Well, and that's-
Well, it's good, the, the state wants more of that, right? Am I understanding that-
Was that?
The state would like to see counties do more of that, right?
Yeah, because they don't have a budget to do it. They do have a, um, a, a department that, you know, works with that, but they, you know, they don't have a lot of money available. And they also have a new director.
Kathy, they're asking the AAA's to take on some of that.
Are they? Okay.
And that's why I was a little curious about it, because do you, if that happened, if that takes place, is that good or bad for us, or has no bearing on what we're doing?
Well, you know, I think that there's plenty of business to go around.
Seems like it.
They, they are, okay. So, for Guardian, um, cases that we're only Guardian for, we have 20. We have 50 facility-based, we have 181 cases that are community-based. So, we do get a lot of referrals from nursing homes on folks that, you know, there's no family left, and, and they want us to be either payee or Guardian or something. So, um, you know, it may impact us, but I think we still see plenty, there's still plenty of business with the population that, you know, are disabled. So, you know, I think if, if the AAA's are able and able to do that and provide that service, I don't see that that would hurt us at all.
That's a reimburse, there's a, we charge a fee for that.
We do, we do.
And there was an allowable fee.
Right. We charge $39 a month. The allowable fee, uh, right now is 41 for Social Security.
And that comes out of the recipient's-
Yes.
Uh, funds.
Yes.
The recipient has to pay that.
Right, right. And we look at individual cases, if folks, you know, if somebody's in a situation where they're so tight they can't afford that, we can waive that fee for a few months and then pick it back up when things are a little better for them. But for our nursing home folks and, and that, you know, basically, they, the majority of their benefit goes to pay their nursing home stay, so we would charge that fee. And, you know, they get an allowance for personal of, I believe it's $50. It's not a whole lot.
Well, look, I think the reason that the state's pushing it so hard is for the AAA's, is the fact they said, hey, you guys gotta, you have to become self-sufficient. You have to find ways to fund, because we're not gonna, you know, we're gonna give you so much that sense. So, this is one of the areas that you could actually charge for, you know.
Yeah, but I, I recall, uh-
It doesn't cover your costs.
Oh, no.
It's been a couple of years back, but I recall when we, when Mike made an adjustment to the fee, and we, it, it hurt a lot of families.
Yeah, yeah.
It was pretty significant, you know, we had a lot of outcry over that, because, you know, it's, you're fixed income folks, and you know, I don't, we, we just had a, I think we had a nominal, a couple of $3, but you know, $3 is 75 bucks a year, and if you're living-
Right, month to month.
Month to month, that's a lot of money.
And we haven't raised that $39 for, you know, several years. Again, you know, the allowable amount has gone up a little bit. We haven't raised it, we may have to look at that in the future, but again, that would be a discussion we would have with the board and, and really, you know, research it thoroughly. Like I said, in specific cases, if we need to waive that fee for a few months, we do.
But when you get to the point, let's say with a user that, uh, they're broke, they're done, they're out of money, so then would that flip over to Medicaid, or how, what would happen?
Oh, well, okay, with the payee program, the payee, their monthly benefit from either SSI, SSDI, or Social Security, they're gonna get that, continue to get that monthly benefit. And that $39 comes out of that monthly benefit.
You still get your money.
Right, right. Like I said, and if, if they, if they can't afford that $39, we waive that fee until we can. And that's part of working with the payee program, is that we're able to, you know, work with if they have, you know, bills that they haven't paid or back bills, things like that. A lot of times, when somebody gets into a situation where they need a payee, you know, it's because they've gotten into trouble somewhere financially. And, you know, maybe they have bills, maybe they have debt, um, maybe they have like a back utility bill. So, you know, we work with their, um, who they owe money to, to work out things like payment plans, to get them on a budget, to make sure, you know, for Social Security, we have to make sure their rent, food, utilities, and basic needs are covered. And then, anything else, sorry about that.
You're so excited about your job.
I know. Anything else is, you know, on top of that, that's what we budget folks with, personal spending. And, you know, if they, if they wanna plan, you know, we also are, work with folks on, on saving for final expenses for burial, having a burial contract. You know, and again, that saves the county money, because if they're able to pay for their own final expenses, then we don't have to.
On the, on, on either the Guardianship or Conservator, do you, um, because it's county, I'm just wondering, are, if people request that service, can we refuse them? Is that-
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
I just wondered about that, so everybody's on the same guidelines with that.
Right, right, yes.
So, are you the only ones helping these folks with a budget?
What do you mean? You mean like-
Budgeting their-
Okay. If, for example, if somebody has like supported community living services, we may work, you know, cooperatively with their SCL provider, because, you know, obviously, I have two full-time trust social workers and a support staff to manage the program, the, you know, the reporting, the banking, and all those things. So, you know, we do work up a monthly budget for people, but if they have other services that, you know, where they're trying to learn to be able to manage their own money, that would be those other support services that do, you know, some of that day-to-day thing, you know, sit down with them, okay, all right, you've got, let's say you've got $20 of spending money this week, let's see how you do, you know, if you're gonna pay, you're gonna need $5 for things like, you know, cigarettes or soda or whatever. I'm sure cigarettes are more than $5, I don't know. But, um, you know, and you, you need so much to get on the bus, you need so much, you know, you need to put away $5 a week if you want to, um, maybe go see your mom in the next, you know, next state or whatever. So, they work with those very specific things. We do some of that, but, you know, we just don't have, have the time or the people power to, um, you know, be drilled down that far with individuals. And, you know, we do have, we do have daily call-in times where people could call in and request funds, you know, if they have it. And sometimes they have it, sometimes they don't, so a lot of times, people aren't very happy with us. And sometimes explaining to people, you know, exactly how much they have and how much they don't have, you know, people often think, well, I should have more money than that, but when you, you know, say, well, we paid your rent, we paid your electric bill, we, you know, paid your phone bill, and that's out of their funds, not out of county funds, it's out of their funds. But, you know, we all know at the end of the month-
So, obviously, you guys are keeping a ledger of this, or are you requiring them to as well? Wouldn't they know if they had money, if they were-
Well, a lot of the folks that we work with, some people have intellectual disabilities, some people have chronic mental illness, some people have the ability to do that, and some people's ability to do that, you know, is, is far less. So, we do keep a ledger, you know, we're required to report by Social Security, we're audited by Social Security. But, you know, if somebody wants a monthly printout, then certainly, you know, we do that for them, you know, so they, they know where they're at in the month, they know what they have.
So, do you see that most people that are able to do, or not?
I think the, the clientele that we work with, sometimes that fluctuates a lot. So, if, if somebody is, um, mental illness is very cyclical, and so if somebody's in a good place, they may be able to. We don't necessarily say, come in, bring your ledger in, cause we wanna see if you match us, because basically, they, they don't, you know, if they need to access their money, they don't have a checkbook that they're gonna write checks from.
Right.
They, they contact us. So, their own accounting system, you know, we don't, we don't get into that much detail with them. We do, you know, are open about where your money went, what, what it was spent on, you know, that's available to them, it's available to Social Security, we have to do that reporting every year.
I'm trying to get a handle on the region and trust services-
Okay.
-your staffing, and this conservative, conservative ships and Guardians. So, that's really not a, the trust program is something we've offered through the region, or are you doing that for people outside of Muscatine County?
We do have a few cases outside of Muscatine County. Each of the counties does some of it. I'd say Scott County and R County, we, we do the lion's share of it. Clinton County, they, they handle a few payee cases. They did have, um, several guardianship cases that they did refer to us when they lost their case management program, because their case management director served as the guardian, those were six cases. So, we are serving a few cases throughout the region, but again, we don't take, we can't always take them all, you know.
And did you also say that, that a lot of the SCL locations, uh, no longer are not doing the service?
Yeah.
And does that affect the reimbursement rate then for their SCL services?
Their reimbursement rate, they're on a tiered rate now that the managed care companies have taken over. And where they would, you know, have a, an individual daily rate, let's say there were three people sharing a, you know, living in a site together, and the individual rates would be based on the individual's actual needs, and they could be working on budgeting as part of that, and then they just, you know, would absorb that, uh, cost of doing the payee services. Some, some organizations did this, some organizations didn't. Now that the tiered rates are in effect, uh, the rates per person are less individualized. So, you have, you might have three people living together that you're getting one rate for, and their needs may be different. So, that's, that's certainly affected our providers. We have been able to take several cases from providers. Uh, I know, you know, Crossroads is no longer doing payee services, and we, we took cases that were living in their 24-hour sites. We were approached by Ram and the Quad Cities to take some cases. We took some cases where the folks originated with us, but we didn't take, you know, the cases that were living in Scott County. So, um, let's see, and then-
So, how are we funding, how are we funding, uh, our trust? And is that just coming through your general assistance position, or do we-
Well, if there, if it's a mental health case, it comes out of mental health. If it's a general assistance case, like some of these nursing home cases, where somebody doesn't have a mental health diagnosis, that comes out of our general assistance. If it's a, if it's a mental health case, it comes out of mental health. And we do, we do our splits, you know, every year, our salary splits and that, so.
And, and so if there's a, if you're waiving, then that's just a, we're doing that out of overhead allocation or something?
Yeah, yeah. And there's, you know, we don't have a lot of cases that we waive, um, and, and we try not to do it for very long. We try to do, you know, get that person, it may happen a lot with a new case, you know, where somebody's come in and things are just a mess, and so we need to get them, you know, need to get things back to an even keel, and then once things are on an even keel, we can pay the bills, we've got enough money to pay the monthly bills, then, you know, we would reinstate that $39 fee.
Kathy, how many of these cases, you say we have a few, we're handling for other counties? How many?
Um, you know, we've got some nursing home cases, we've got, I'd say, let's see if I got it here. Maybe around 20.
And we're charging the $39 for those as well?
Most of them, I would believe, I-
Do we get reimbursed by the other counties, or are we kinda carrying their-
Well, that's something that we're looking at in, you know, future budget and the regional budget. We are, we are looking at how we do that.
I mean, it's, you know, it sounds like less than $1,000 probably, but I still don't like the idea of paying for anything.
I, I agree. And, you know, that's something we're, we are working towards, you know.
Yeah, I think it'd be pretty important that we understand, you know, the $39 is kinda irrelevant, what's our real cost of doing this?
Right.
And if we're doing it for the region-
Right.
-we don't want Muscatine County taxpayers paying for Scott County residents.
No.
We should know what that difference is, and they should be, the region should be asking to make up that difference in cost.
Right. Yeah, and, and, you know, the majority of the ones that we're doing are the ones that have come from Clinton County.
That's right.
But, you know, obviously, is a very needed program. It's a program that the county's had since 1965, and, you know, it, it helps people be able to rent an apartment, you know, to be- you know, to be stably housed, which is important, you know, it keeps their lights on, and so it helps keep people stable. And if, you know, if you have those basic needs met, some of the other issues that they're dealing with, the mental health things and, and some of the disability issues, then you can really address that. If you, if you don't have stable housing, and you're worried about your lights getting shut off, you know, you can't worry about some of those other things and address some of those other issues in your life.
Any other discussion? So Kathy, I understand you've got a business associate agreement for us too?
I do, yes, from Isaac, from County Network Services, and basically, you know, it, it just states that we're in a partnership and that any protected health info, I'm just dropping things all over the place today, protected health information that we enter into our county network system remains protected, that, you know, they have a responsibility, that we have a responsibility, because through county network systems, which is where, you know, we authorize services, we can look up when someone comes to our county and applies for services, it's, it's a statewide system, so we can enter that person's information in and see, okay, this person is coming to us from Johnson County, you know. Depending on the level of security and the releases that have been signed, you know, we can perhaps see that, you know, yes, they received funding for, you know, this service or that service in Johnson County, and maybe they're applying for that in Muscatine County. So that helps us be able to, you know, get more information quicker and help get people serviced faster.
And this is one of the agreements that was required by the HIPAA regulations to enter into?
Yes.
It looks like a pretty standard agreement. Has Caroche, our HIPAA consultant, signed off on the agreement, have they reviewed it?
I don't think, we are contracted with Caroche.
You guys, they just signed the, the agreement last Monday.
But the region is contracted with Caroche, and Caroche has been through this, and, you know, the other counties in the region are signing this.
They've reviewed it.
They've reviewed it, yes.
And they're okay with it for compliance.
In fact, they were the ones that suggested that we needed this business associate agreement. There was some thought that, you know, our relationship with Isaac and with community, county network systems was such that we didn't need it, and it was actually Caroche that recommended that we have it.
Are there other providers or entities out there we need to get one of these in place with?
Um, no, not at this time.
Can I have an entertaining motion to approve this agreement?
Second.
Let's move to second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Agreement is approved? Anything else?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to go back to previous subject for just a minute. Kathy, in the documents that you sent to us, there's a couple of charts in there, I believe, they may have been furnished by United Way, I don't know.
Oh, the Alice, the Alice information.
That's, that's one of the, yeah, the addresses, and I, either I don't totally understand it, or if I do, I'm kind of shocked, I guess, about, on the second page of that, they were talking about the different cities in Muscatine County, and the degree of either Alice level or poverty level.
Right.
And the combined for Muscatine County households was forty-two percent, which as I looked at it, looked like maybe twelve to fifteen percent currently would be down in the poverty level, and, and then the balance in the Alice level, which doesn't get me too excited, because I don't think that's much more than poverty. So could you address that a little bit and say, if I'm understanding this right?
Sure.
Or I'm not reading it right?
And what, what that forty-two percent is, that's for the city of Muscatine?
Right.
For the county of Muscatine, the Alice household, and Alice stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. So these are the working families that, based on, you know, the costs of housing, childcare, food, transportation, you know, some of those very basic things, don't earn enough money to meet those basic needs for their family. And, you know, the figures show what, what's needed for a single adult, and then for a household based on two adults, an infant and a preschooler. So if you look at that hourly wage, for a single adult, a single adult needs to earn ten dollars and forty-three cents an hour to, you know, effectively support themselves. For a family of four, that hourly wage is twenty-nine fifty-one, so you could split that up a couple of ways, you know, that could be one age wage earner earning almost thirty dollars an hour, or two wage earners earning about fifteen dollars an hour. And, you know, there are a lot of jobs that, you know, pay significantly less than that, and you can look at that private sector employment chart, you know, where the wages are, you know, the annual total for that family of four is almost sixty thousand dollars a year, and, you know, you can see where the average salaries, even with your large firms, if you have one income, you're still below that fifty-nine thousand. So the numbers, you know, if you look at, back in, the last Alice they did, Muscatine was at thirty-eight percent, and so now we're at forty-two, so we really haven't made any strides, in fact, we've gone the wrong way.
Yeah, I'm just, it's to me, I just, it's just, it's a tough swallow.
It is a tough swallow, yeah. And, you know, we'll be talking a little bit with MCSA in a bit about lack of affordable housing, you know, that's a big one, if you look at what it costs to rent an apartment, you know, and, and every time you move, you know, we are seeing this too. Recently, one of our utility companies has implemented a policy where folks with a poor payment history are charged a double amount of deposit, double, you know, the highest bill of the property, or, you know, and so that hurts people too, and we see a lot of people, unfortunately, that have a poor payment history.
Kathy, does it break down anywhere, what proportion of these are two-parent or two-person households versus one-person household?
Not right here. Now, there is, and I haven't had, it, this information came out on the twenty-sixth, so there's a big report, and I think I sent you a link to the actual Alice report, and it's for the whole state, so you can look at individual counties and see where individual counties are at as well. And I'm not sure if it drills down that far specifically to, you know, how the makeup of the households are and that, but, you know, it is, it is kind of an eye-opener, this Alice report, and unfortunately, we seem to be going in the wrong direction.
Conclusion seems to be that a family of four needs to make, or about sixty thousand dollars a year to make that's made.
And some of, you know, some people would say that some of these, these monthly estimate costs probably are a little low, too.
Who did the report?
Um, the United Way.
So, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it's available on their website, and also the, you know, the previous report that was done two years ago, that information is, is out there as well for comparison.
Well, I think, this is something we see in the school district as well, I think it really seems to kind of a dual world system we have in Muscatine County, and then certainly the city, that you've got folks who are pretty well off, and you've got a good number of those, and then you've got folks who seem to be, have not, not a great deal of upward mobility, for whatever reason, they're, they're kind of trapped in this, in this cycle, and you see it repeating generationally, and, yeah, it's, it's disturbing to see it, it's disturbing to see it increasing.
Yeah.
Obviously, we want to do everything we can to encourage growth that, that gets us out of that. What, are there any conclusions drawn?
Well, you know, the Line Impact Muscatine Group, this is something that they're working on, and they're working on, you know, how education affects, you know, people's ability to maintain employment that can support them and a family. You know, it's, it's really concluded that any more a high school diploma, that's not enough, that you need post-secondary training in something, very specific training, you know, and, and as you guys have mentioned before, there's a lot of jobs out there that employers can't fill, because people lack that skill set. So, you know, I think we've got two things going on. Somehow, people aren't gaining the skills that they need to become employable and become sufficient, so, you know, we don't, there are a lot of factors that really could go into that. We could probably be here all day figuring that one out, and if you can figure it out, that's the million-dollar question for sure. Okay, any other questions on that?
Well, thanks for answering that.
Sure. Just wanted to kind of wrap up a little bit on the region, then we'll talk a little bit about general assistance. I have instituted monthly meetings with our crisis system staff in Muscatine, there is a person in the emergency department, and also a community-based care coordinator. So when people present to our emergency department with a mental health issue, they are followed by that, the, Robert Young will refer to them as pitchers and catchers, and there's one in each counties that has an emergency department, that has a hospital. So the exception would be Cedar County, they have mobile crisis because they don't have a hospital. So when somebody presents, you've got that staff in the emergency department that will meet with the person, and then make a handoff to the community-based care coordinator, who will then try to hook that person up with any services that might be beneficial, you know, and also, there is a new coordinator for the crisis system, a new manager, and her name is Penny West, so I met with Penny, I think Nathan, you met with Penny, at the regional governing board meeting, so we are gonna be meeting here monthly to talk about, okay, how many cases did you refer, how many cases did you follow up on? And I, I want to report that I, I had a, a very good experience with this group, I had someone come into our office in kind of a crisis mode and, and needing some service, and I called and talked with the emergency department person, we needed to get this person an appointment with a prescriber, and so we were able to do that, just like that. Again, you know, part of my report is Robert Young in Muscatine, and also the region has started the prescriber bridge appointments, there's fifteen appointments available a week, and, you know, there's quite a few available in Scott County, and then half, the other half go to the rest of the region. So we've been able to utilize that, at least one, and it just started in the middle of June, so that's been a success story. You know, and if you, if you have somebody that needs medications, and they can't get in for a month or two months, or maybe sometimes they burn bridges with a prescriber where they're, they've missed appointments or, or whatever, and then they can't get in, or they're, they're fired by their provider, and that's a problem, and that happens with our folks. So that's been a success story, and really, you know, that's helped us out a lot. Our crisis evaluations as of the end of April, you know, they've done twenty-seven telehealth evaluations in the ER in the month of April, I don't have May and June figures yet for that. The region, at the regional level, the governing board also did approve some one-time funding requests, and of those funding requests, they approved a request for Crossroads to implement a supported employment program. Some of the other one-time funding requests that will benefit our region will be expansion of Vera French's Assertive Community Treatment Program into the other four counties, and that was a grant that was approved, and then educational services from NAMI for their family-to-family program, and that's a, that's a nice program, it's education for folks who have a family member that has mental illness, just helps the family understand what the person's going through, what resources there are out there, and, you know, NAMI's a, a very good source of education and facts about mental illness.
Kathy, is Goodwill still doing supported employment?
Goodwill does supported employment, yes, absolutely. Yeah, and right now, they're our only supported employment provider in Muscatine, previously the ARC out of Johnson County, but they have never been able to support staff here, so that's been, Goodwill is our main one. And, you know, they do a good business, I don't think that this is gonna really cut into their business, because there's enough business to go around, and the push really is to move from sheltered work and congregate services to community-based services, and this will help providers do that.
I don't know how sustainable the Crossroads program will be, I mean, it being a one-time funding request.
Yeah, well, that, you know, that's the kicker, that's always the key, but, you know, the thing about supported, supported employment, it will be a med, it is a Medicaid-funded service, so, you know, but getting a program up and running, getting staff hired and trained, you don't get any money from Medicaid until you're actually serving clients, but yet you have to do all these other activities before you can actually start serving clients. So our hope is that this helps them get their program, get their staff hired, get some training going, and then start serving some clients.
I thought a couple of years ago, I'm just, this is, that there were some issues around, some of that, with some of the supported employment that Goodwill was doing, where they were basically throwing people off the program, and maybe really shouldn't have
Oh, okay.
Is that a funding issue, or what was allowed?
Um, I, I believe what you're, what, what we're talking about were interpretations of what they could do and, and the employment sites, because I think they had a lot of people working at the store, and that wasn't considered community-based. Okay, a couple other ones, Life Connections is a group up here, Run Respite group out of DeWitt, and they are, they received some funding to start up a peer-run respite house. A respite house would be something that maybe somebody could go to instead of going to the ER, if they just needed a little time out, you know, a little downtime, things aren't going well, and granted, it's in DeWitt, but it's available to anybody in the, in the region, and they're not up and running yet, again, these programs, we want to see them up and running in the next fiscal year. We will be meeting, the, our regional management team will be meeting with each of the recipients of a one-time funding grant and writing up memorandum of understanding, expectation of outcomes and reporting, so we'll be doing that on July tenth. Okay, questions on mental health? Okay, on to general assistance, and last month, we had some questions on MCSA, and then the MCSA folks are here to talk a little bit about their program, and, you know, one of the things we've been working on is, is how to report numbers and how to report who we're serving, how many we're serving, and that has been a work in progress and continues to be a work in progress, but what I have done was I went through, I just have too many papers up here. I went through our claims for MCSA and came up with figures on the number of people that we authorize service for by month, and I'm gonna find it here, and you have it in your packets, and what had happened previously, back in two thousand fifteen and sixteen, our figures were duplicated. When we do authorizations for MCSA, we do those every two weeks, and we do that because people's situations at MCSA change pretty frequently. You might have somebody that presents, and maybe we authorize service for a week for them, but they only stay two or three days. You might also have people that are there for a longer period of time, because they're able to connect with the folks at MCSA and work on a plan for self-sufficiency, and they may be there for several months. So if we're looking at our statistics, as of the end of May, and these are adults served, I'm working on a way to capture, you know, are we serving single adults, are we serving families, because all of that factors into the cost, obviously, you're gonna pay more to house a family than you are a single individual. So this is based on the adults that came in, and we authorized service. Now, we may have authorized family shelter, we may have authorized just single nights in the gym, so if we're looking at, looking at FY sixteen, we, single adults that we authorize service for...
I'm sorry, Kathy, I apologize for interrupting, could, is this in the packet that you gave?
It is.
If you could direct us to where you're referring to right now?
It is in the packet, it looks, it's homeless shelter status.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Okay? And so I worked, you know, worked with Charla on that a little bit too, and we, I, I, basically, we went back through, I went back through our claims that we authorized and that we paid. And just, you know, right now, your figures, your dollar figures are actually what was paid in the month, but your stats here, I felt the best way to show you was who we authorized for in a specific month. Okay, so, back in sixteen, our year-to-date total was two hundred and fifty-eight, last year was three hundred and seven. Last year was 307, and so far this year, 385. And these are unduplicated adults. Now, unduplicated for the month. You may see somebody that's maybe stayed August, September, October. They're going to be counted August, September, and October, okay? And it may include families as well as just individuals. So, you know, those numbers will show you why our rental assistance at MCSA is significantly higher this year. And then the MCSA folks are going to be able to talk a little bit about what specific things that they work on with people, what kind of plans that they develop, what kind of ongoing service that they provide, okay? And we, you know, we do provide some assistance that partially funds a case coordinator. And, you know, they'll talk a little bit about what that person does. And we'll be working on capturing some data, you know, on, you know, maybe families and children and how long people stay. You know, again, our, our systems, we've, we've seen several different systems. We've had two incarnations of CSN. You know, we had a brand-new one last year. We had the one before. So our ability to capture data will continue to improve. My staff, two of my staff and I had some brief training on INCODE 10, which is the county's new system. And I'm very pleased that that's going to help us just capture numbers, that we're not going to be transposing numbers and manually entering things, that that's going to help us quite a bit. And we're also going to take advantage of some of the IT trainings that are going to be available, you know, through the county that the IT department has. So that'll be, figures and facts are definitely a work in progress, but we'll be improving those all the time. You know, the other thing with community services, we've had a receptionist retire, and so we're in the process of hiring a receptionist right now. Questions? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to MCSA folks.
Kathy, one other question. Looking at the average amount spent per adult, it seems like our costs there are going up as well. '16, we would have averaged about $233 per adult per time. Last year, 17, $246, and all the way up to $261 this year. Is that, are we serving a greater number of families? How do you account for that?
Well, and that's, you know, that's something, too, that we probably are. I don't, I don't have a good way to capture that data yet, but that's something that we're going to be working on together with MCSA to capture that better. And, yeah. So you just, you just did.
Just averaged out the costs per person.
Right, and I had done that as well, too. And, yeah, it's, it's gone up a little bit every year, but compared to some other things, it's, you know, not as much as, as maybe gas and carton of milk and, and some other things, too. So I appreciate your interest in this and ongoing support.
We're looking at about 15% over two years, so we wouldn't say it's insignificant.
And a lot of that may be who, who we're serving, if we're serving more families, and MCSA will be able to address that a little bit with you, too, today. Okay, any other questions?
Anybody else have anything for Kathy? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we're going to hear from the Muscatine Center for Strategic Action with Executive Director Charlotte Schaefer and Program Director Scott Dolke. Welcome, guys.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for having us. We appreciate that, too. You talk about both our partnership as well as some of the services we have to provide. We, MCSA offers sheltering for the homeless, sheltering for domestic violence, folks suffering from domestic violence. We offer a rapid rehousing program, a homeless prevention program, 68 units of permanent supportive housing, and then a whole health, a whole host of health services. We're going to go into more detail. But my name is Charlotte Schaefer, and I'm currently the director, but I'm only going to be at MCSA for a couple of weeks. And I want to introduce Scott Dolke. He's currently our program director. He joined us last year. He comes with a great deal of experience serving the at-risk populations, has done a phenomenal job for us since he's joined MCSA. He will be assuming the position of director here two weeks from now. So Scott will also be speaking as we work through things today. I'm excited about the work he'll be doing and the leadership he'll bring. I also wanted to introduce a few folks. We have Jim Simmons, he's on our board, he's the Hy-Vee director. Angie Johnson, she's the director at the hospital, she's on our board as well. Bonnie Nichols is our resource director for the, for MCSA. Naomi Duwinder is the president of MCC and also on our board. Jody Royal-Goodwin is a collaborative partner. She's a city housing administrator and works very closely on some of our programs, as does Kathy with us. And of course, Mike Hagerty is a collaborative partner as well. So I want to begin with talking a little bit, you know, we just talked a little bit about the Alice Report, but some of the pressures we see that are affecting the trends on sheltering. The leading cause of homelessness is the lack of affordable housing. So in the state of Iowa, 81% of those that are homeless are considered first-time homeless. And there's, across the state, they're seeing a rise in families just as we are. And Nathan, before we get done, we can kind of address one of your questions on the numbers you just had, but those are impacting who we serve and how we serve them. Recently commissioned a housing study and found that we are 990 units short of affordable housing for the 2,400 households that make less than $25,000 a year. Our median rent is a little bit higher at 762 than area rents as well, and all those pressures are affecting a folk's ability to manage on an ongoing basis. As you probably are aware, a rule of thumb for housing is you shouldn't pay more than 30% of your income toward housing, or else it's pulling from something else like health or food, or some things along those lines. Our clients we're seeing are paying 60% to 80% of their income for rents and housing-related expenses, leaving very little for other expenses. What that does is it makes them vulnerable to what we call any kind of hiccup expense, whether it be health or transportation costs, and then how do you ever get caught up for those things? So over the last couple of years, our board has stepped back and said that we want to look more deeply at the systemic cause of homelessness and hunger, which is the lack of affordable housing. We're doing that while we're also enhancing deferral programs, deferral programs to keep people from becoming homeless, as well as looking at middle-skilled labor advancement options. Now, as we do all that, we're also, and you're going to hear about that today, we're improving how we service the folks that come into shelter to create more stability with them as, with the time that we have with them as well. So we're going to kind of work through those issues, talk a little bit about our programs, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions. A quick focus on families. Statistically, for every one child in shelter, there's five more that are couch hopping or living in uninhabitable locations. What we know is, and I'm going to just step back, some people say, why do folks couch hop? Well, if you are staying with somebody that rents their apartment or home, and the landlord finds out, they're going to have that family move on. It creates this constant mobility for the families. This is incredibly difficult for the children, both emotionally as well as academically. And what we see is the last place they stay is typically predatory in nature. And unfortunately, we see that at shelter, that before they arrive to us, there's predatory situations going on for the adults and the children in the home. So we want to make sure that we are able to serve the families in those circumstances. Shelter is the best option because it creates safety instability for the children. What we know is the evidence has shown that for every time a child moves from, due to housing instability, it sets them back up to six months in the classroom. That is affecting themselves as well as the entire classroom. So we know that educational success begins with ensuring the kids are stably housed and not hungry. And so we work really hard on that because we know that's going to improve academic outcomes, graduation rates, and ultimately create the potential of more prosperous working adults, which is what we're all trying to achieve. So to talk a little bit about our numbers at shelter, last year, we served 365 men, women, and children through shelter, so in our sheltering services. 104 of those were children. So 104 children called us home last year. This morning, as we woke up, we had 16 staying with us. I'm going to turn it over, and Scott's going to talk a little bit. We're going to kind of go back and forth as we go through our services.
Hi, folks. Talk a little bit more about our shelter and the numbers we serve there. After a busy calendar year 2017, our spring numbers did dip down a little bit. Unfortunately, today, we're back in overflow in our family shelter. Overflow means that it's booked, all of your rooms full, and we're sleeping women in the conference room and computer lab. We don't turn anybody away anymore. We've reduced barriers to people coming into shelter. We see it as our job is not just serve the families, but serve every individual in Muscatine, sometimes some very difficult cases. A little breakout of all the people that we did serve, we served 30 veterans, and this is through all of our programs minus the domestic violence shelter. We served 30 veterans, 377 children, 63 disabled folks, 70 folks that had, that reported a chronic mental health issue, and 73 people over the age of 55. We've implemented some new social work skills at MCSA. We've got a new assessment tool called the VISPA app. I can give you the whole acronym, but I think it might bore you. It, it kind of helps us determine who needs what kind of assistance. Some people who come into shelter are able to self-correct on their own without much assistance, while others need more intensive services, whether it be rapid rehousing or permanent. So we're able to implement this, this tool, and it's a nationally-recognized tool to help us defer people and get to the people that we need to serve with most, most intensive services. At the shelter, there's three things I think everybody should know about how casework is done. Everybody who comes into the shelter has to pay a little bit, and that has, that has a lot to do with self-respect. When you pay your fair share, you feel a little bit more proud of yourself, and it's a good lesson in responsibility. Also, everybody who comes to shelter has to do a daily chore. Most of the building is maintained by the people that are staying there, and again, we think it teaches a lot about responsibility. Everybody who comes in the shelter has to have a case plan. They meet their first day with a caseworker, and they develop a move-out date, and they set goals for how that move-out date is going to happen. We robbed from our maintenance department, we had two FTEs for maintenance, and we have gone down to a .25 FTE to get a full-time social worker. We were operating on a part-time social worker. Now that we have that full-time social worker, we've also increased the number of times she's meeting with people. So if somebody moves into shelter now, they're meeting with her every single day for that first week. We found that, again, people will self-correct often within that first week, so having her meet every day assists in them helping with self-correct. After that, they're meeting with her about once a week, and the caseworker will focus on first housing, what's going on with your housing, what caused it, then income, and then they'll get the rest of the barriers. If there was issues with transportation that led to them becoming homeless, if there's issues with childcare that led to them becoming homeless, maybe they were robbing from their rent to pay for some of that stuff, that social worker will make sure those things are in place by the time she leaves. We've implemented new performance measures that we're really excited about, and I'd love to email them to you guys if you need them, where we measure how many of our folks were sending out to permanent, to stable housing, and how many folks were increasing their income. In our family shelter, since we've implemented the changes to a full-time social worker and meeting every day, we are hitting months where we're sending 100% of the families back out to stable housing. That's unheard of. The state average is between 30 and 40%. We're nailing it. On the men's side, we're a little bit less. Recently, we were able to hit our benchmark at 70% in a few months. It hovers around 60s for us. Again, the state average is 30 to 40%. So I'm proud of the improvements we've made and I'm proud of the effect it can have on clients. I think if you guys wanted those measures, we keep them tracked, and I plan on emailing those to Kathy going forward.
Do you have some kind of a report rather than just emailing out what they have? Some kind of a synopsis or an executive summary you could send to us?
As far as that is, I send one to my board every time we meet, so I can, I can start sending that to Kathy.
And that would be helpful.
Beautiful.
And again, those changes are changes that have occurred since Scott joined us, and he's put a great deal of focus on that. We're seeing great outcomes. To give you an idea of what our shelter areas are within our homeless shelter, we've got the gym, and that's where the single men sleep. And we house 15 to 20 men generally at night. We also have a shift room that's been put together in the last couple of years, so that if someone's working a shift that they can't come in and sleep during the night, the gym's not available during the day, so they can get some decent sleep and make sure that they can get back to work in the evening. So we've tried to address that as well. The average stay for the gentleman in the gym is about 26 days. Now, some of you may remember when we used to ask the men to leave during the day. We don't do that anymore for several reasons. First off, we've only got a window of 26 days on generally to work with people, and we want to be able to, you can't work with someone you can't see. And so as you can see, Scott's metrics are showing that when we have social work, we're seeing improvements. Also, when, when we move people to the streets, they often don't have a place to go. You can't look for work eight hours a day, and our computer lab actually is in our building as well. We have a computer lab looking for, so you can look for jobs. So as long as they're working their case plan, they have access to the building just as the family shelter folks do, and that is a change that we've implemented. In the family shelter, we have eight locking rooms with a large play area. Women and families stay in there. Women bunk together in a room while families have their own room, and it's full a great deal, as Scott was saying, but families always take precedence. So we want to ensure the families stay together. In the past, men couldn't stay with their families, and that didn't make sense. If you're in crisis, the men should be able to stay with the family, so we've made that change as well. Stay time, there isn't a limit. It, as you can see, 45 days is the average for a family, but it's individualized by circumstance, so we coach for progress and effort, and you can see that in some of Scott's comments that he was making as well. One important component for the family shelter, all children are bused to their current schools, so we keep consistency with the teachers and their peers. On any given night, we're housing 40 to 50 homeless individuals, and then on the second floor is 35 dorm rooms, and the men that live up there rent from us, and we'll talk more about that in just a second. But so on any given night, we've got 40 to 50 in the lower level, and then another 34 on the second floor.
We serve just about everybody we can. We serve the common Joe that comes in, first-time homeless, but we also serve some folks with some difficult cases. 19% of the folks that we serve have chronic mental health issues, chronically homeless. They have a chronic mental health issue, and they repeat it in a homeless situation multiple times in a year. As Charlotte talked about, addressing some of the systemic causes, we can, we can shelter people and put out the fire here, but what are we doing to get behind the problem, you know, to get ahead of the problem, to make sure it's not continuing happening? And so on one end, we're focusing on housing and income. As far as the chronically mentally ill or the chronically homeless, what are we doing? We've applied for a few grants, and we're excited about seeing the outcome of those. We hope to see in the future how those will play out. Those will address some of the housing needs for the people that have mental health issues, as well as in addressing drop-in needs and socialization needs for people that have mental health issues. Again, we're just trying to get to the root causes of the situation rather than just put out the fire. Another big part of what we're doing is focusing on education. Our social workers have a life skills curriculum. Again, it's a written-down curriculum I could provide to you if you guys requested it. They also, we also provide job skills through, via a volunteer. He comes in, he used to be a human resource director, and he'll do a pretty rigorous application process, resume process, and interview skills. We also have partnered with the city to do a renter training, so we'll send people to the city's renter training class, and that teaches people that being a landlord is a business, it's not a charity, and how to be a good tenant. We've partnered with the YMCA. They come in and do a 24/7 dad's class that teaches guys that it's okay to be masculine and still be a dad, and it's okay to think your kids are disgusting for picking their boogers as long as you're not hitting them. We've also partnered with the Robert Young Center in a number of ways. The most recent way is with a therapy group. It's run by a certified therapist from their main center. We've worked with MCC on a whole bunch of stuff. We administered a Carver grant to help people get to MCC to work on their CNA classes, other AA programs, and get their GED. Recently, we've partnered with the college on the welding program. It's pretty exciting stuff. We've had eight out of the 10 people that have gone through the two pilot programs, land jobs making over $15 an hour. That's amazing, when you go from living on a gym floor making nothing to making $18 an hour. It's a testament to what this community can do. We had one guy, Miguel, who was making $13,000 a year, had a number of kids, and when he was turning his pace up, he says, you know, I think he was talking to Katie at the college, "I never knew any of this existed. I never knew college existed." He never knew it was available to him. He knew it existed, but he didn't know it was available to him. Knowing the funding sources that are behind this program, he was able to get, not only get this program, get this welding certificate, he was also able to, he's also thinking about going to Gaunt to get his AA degree. And the beauty of the program is people need to pay their rent now. You know, we have, they're, almost they're facing eviction, they need to get their rent paid now. And so the college very nimbly squeezed as much welding training, almost two years of welding training, into six weeks, and they go hard and heavy from 8:00 in the morning to 5:00 at night, six days a week. So they're able to get a lot of classroom and lab hours welding. We had another guy, this, this could also affect the generational issues. We had a guy, John, that was so proud of his welding instruction that he brought his kid in to meet with me, and his kid now wants to become a welder. So now, we're getting into sometimes the generational issues and improving the outcomes going forward. We're starting to look at other trade trainings. Again, I think, I think we have to focus on limited time. I'm losing people that could be interested in the welding program to seasonal jobs because they need to pay their rent now. So what can we train fast? And so we've been talking to the college about what we can do as far as that. Some programs are agreeing to do a work while you earn. There was one company that said, here, why don't you come work for us part-time in the evenings while you're doing your welding program during the day? I think it testifies to the ingenuity of the folks that are in the program, they're willing to work, they're willing to skip their entire day to improve their future. And I think it speaks to the factories in town and the college and their commitment to making Muscatine a better place. I think that's, back over to Charlotte.
To move, excuse me, to move to our homeless prevention program, it serves folks that are on the verge of homelessness. So what we're trying to do is defer, defer a need for shelter stay. So families that are at risk are provided tailored services, and initially, we worry about mitigation of the emergent crisis, but then we move on, and we take a look at how can we do supportive services around employment, education, transportation shortfalls, If there's health and financial instruction that needs to happen, do we need to do some landlord, landlord conversation to try to stabilize them as well? This gets back to there's no wiggle room, where we kind of started earlier today. There's no wiggle room. So we see people that are about to lose their housing because they're going to lose their job because they can't fix a flat tire for $14 and we can step in. Or they have a job opportunity, but they don't have a birth certificate. Because when people start moving, they put it in a, in a storage unit thinking they can pay, but then they can't pay anymore and all their important documents are locked away. So we can help with, for $25 to get them a birth certificate or pay for a pair of work boots to get them started into their, into a new job opportunity. I think it's important that according to the 2010 census, 2/3 of those in poverty are working 1.7 jobs. And that's what we see and that's what we see through the homeless prevention program. So we see how we can align to assure that they can continue with those opportunities. What that also creates however, is sometimes non-existent or substandard childcare. So sometimes that's a piece that we have to work with as well. Before we will give any kind of financial assistance, we meet with the city, Jody, and county, Kathy, and we discuss, will they be stable the following month? Is this a hiccup expense? Will they be stable the following month if we help reset them? And then on average, the assist that we give is $140. So that shows it's not a large dollar that keeps people in their home. And again, it keeps them from coming into shelter and having additional shelter costs. To give you guys an idea, last year we served 185 households through that program with 250 children. So about a school building of children were served through that program. It's 2% of all city households. As we placed our focus on homeless deferral, we took a look inside. The homeless prevention program's doing amazing things, let's add a rapid rehousing program. So we piloted that last year. And what that is, is we move people into their home before they're ready and then we ladder down the rent over three or four months as their income builds. In addition to that, we, we work with them each month on an ongoing basis for up to a year. We had great success and we went and applied for a grant and actually Jody was helpful in applying for that grant. We received $180,000 that will be coming to our community for the first time this year. And that will be directly for rapid rehousing program. In addition to that, we have a food component that Hy-Vee helps us. We deliver food into their home during the fourth week while they're at that, those beginning stages to make sure that families have nutrition coming into their homes. We are very engaged in state-level conversations for these very reasons as we try to identify how we best serve across the housing continuum. We also collaborate with the city on 10 P2 vouchers and those are for literally homeless. And what that does is it shortens their stay at shelter as well. So we work very closely on that. In addition, we have various permanent supportive housing units. We have the 35 units that I mentioned on the second floor. Just to tell you, that's a win-win situation because we actually get 10% of our income from rental from those, from those, uh, units on the second floor. We also have 27 units of permanent supportive housing for disabled, senior men, family housing in various partnerships with churches, nonprofits and community members. We're about to add six more units for the literally homeless. What happens when we're able to provide that permanent supportive housing is we, the, the folks have quality responsive housing opportunities in front of them and they also have the social work component. Our domestic violence shelter began in 2014 when it was going to be closed and they came to us to see if we could try to work with them to keep it open. You're 75% more likely to be killed at the time you first flee. You need safety. And if it would have been closed locally, what that would mean is women couldn't keep their jobs necessarily because they would have to go to the Quad Cities of Iowa City and might not have transportation. So you're less likely to be able to stay away from your abuser. And secondarily, children would have to, again, leave their schools. And when you're going through that kind of trauma, to leave your teachers and your peers is not in the best interest of the children. To give you an idea, last year we served 65. 45% are typically children as we looked across the last three years. We also operate a crisis line that takes over 400 calls a year within our community. I want to touch a little bit on health. When you can't afford quality, stable housing, it affects your health through stress, homelessness, chronic health contributors and nutrition. And so quite simply, housing is a preventative healthcare. What we see is it decreases costs and it keeps people working. And so what we sat back and we've, over the, and over the last many years, we've had amazing boards and leadership at MCSA, but we said, "How do we ensure access is available to the most vulnerable?" And so we have a resource center in our lower level of vital community services. We have a University of Iowa Pediatric Dental Clinic that last year served 700 from our community, 700 children. We have an adult eye clinic that Dr. Corpey volunteers and we served over 50 people. Many of those were unsighted last year and for $10 they got their checkup and their eyeglasses. We have Robert Young Behavioral Health Services in our lower level. They served 500 from our community last year. As well as family empowerment offices providing behavioral services to children and families. And we're getting ready to partner with the public, Muscatine Public Health to offer a wellness clinic. And we'll have a registered nurse on staff two days a week in our lower level. And we're thankful for the partnership we have with, with the hospital and the public health for that as well. That's going to make them, you can see we have comprehensive services then available in, in a way that's very accessible. For the downtown clients, our clients, and anyone that happens to be coming to some of the community services that we have available, we'll have it right across the street. We're also talking to the food pantry about relocating to our space if that's a choice they'd like to make. And we see that as a nutrition component and also a way that those, the folks can then use our other services in their lower level. As I indicated, our board has shifted our strategic focus to take a look at how do we impact the cause of homelessness and hunger, which is affordable housing. And then from that, we'll create self-sufficiency. We also take an aim at Living Learning Labor Advancement Initiative. And you've heard some of those comments through what Scott talked about as well. What we know is if we can take aim at the Living Learning Labor Advancement Initiative and move across that continuum, we'll create long-term stability for the folks we serve. Creating the stabilizing activities, we believe will create consumers in the community. And we also believe it will enhance the economy. But this focus, as you can see, is woven through the fabric of our programs and our decisioning as a board. What we believe is these successes also are going to ripple into the next generation. And we're starting to see some of those things occur right now. We're happy to provide any information on our program, services and partnerships to you at any time. We will email some additional information out to you. I invite you each to please take time, if you have time, to stop in, we'll walk you through the building. We love to have visitors and I'd say that to anybody in the community. We love to show what we have, the services that we provide with, to the folks that we are able to serve. I look forward to being able to report on the momentum and I, I guess I won't be reporting, but I'm excited about the reporting that will go on and the momentum and impact of the services in the future. We're poised for some really good outcomes. I, I thank you for your time and now I want to go ahead and we'll be able to address any of the questions we have. And if it's okay, I'll start with Nathan's question on numbers. To take a look, when you look across the last 10 years per individual that we've served, because when you just, when you count adults, that's not counting the children underneath. But the number has been from, ranged from about $7 to $9 a night per person. And that hasn't changed across the last 10 years when we took a look at it. So what has changed is last year we were, or two years ago, I think, we were at 42 children that were served at, at, now, because there's two different shelters, but I'm just going to talk about the homeless shelter right now. Last year was 54, uh, I'm sorry, two years it was 54 and then it was at 74. So what we're seeing is we're seeing a rise in families. When you see a rise in families, you're going to see a little bit higher cost because the family shelter has a different costing than the gym. But one important component for you to keep in mind is even though we might serve six people in a room as part of a family, we don't change the charge for the night stay. It's just what, you're going to go to a little bit higher charge for the evening because it's in the family shelter instead of the gym. But if we have six people in the room, that doesn't change the charge that's assessed to the county. Does that answer that question?
Yes.
What other questions do you have?
I'd like to make a comment to start. I think the presentation you've given today was very thorough and fact-filled. And I am not accustomed to getting anything quite, quite to this caliber. I, I appreciate it very, very much. That's, that's one element. My question is that through your presentation, you explained your diversification basically. Does your board feel that maybe you're too diversified, should be more diversified? I mean, I just think you're doing so much, I find it incredible.
Well, first I want to, I want to say thank you for your comments on our, on our presentation. It's very easy to talk about the work that's going on because again, it's very collaborative in nature. We wouldn't be able to do it. I think to answer your question, the board is, I, and we have board members here, so they might be better at answering. But I think what we've identified is we looked at how we serve and said, "How can we serve better?" And we've just continued to try to fill those gaps. MCSA actually started in 1991 and the theory behind it was to fill gaps in the community. And they called it the Great Experiment. I think it's been a great experiment. But anyway, to answer your question, as we have gone across the housing continuum, we believe we've served better. What it's done is again, we have the same FTE as we had three years ago. So our people are getting pulled pretty tight as we, as we work through those things. And I think we'll have to continue to evaluate that. But from a servicing perspective, if we're going to service comprehensively and create stability for those in our community, we're poised to do that. Do you want, does anybody want to add anything to that?
So now, if you went here, I served on the board as the president of MCC. I think this idea of transformation is what the board supports. We will continue to get kind of moderate increase in Alice reports if we serve our clientele in the same way that we have. What we're looking to do is look at the root cause, root causes in the case and how can we address those? So we're actually able to change the trajectory, have a positive impact on the city and the community through all of these efforts. So I believe it's, it's complicated. This world is, is...
But aren't you sometimes a little concerned with you stretch yourself so thin, you won't do a good job at anything? You know, sometimes you can try to do too much, you're so dedicated.
I, I agree with that. And that, from the community college, we also serve all different populations, right? From summer camps to the welding program, to students who are just coming for personal interest. But we're not willing to leave anyone behind.
Sure.
So I believe the board has great confidence in the leadership that all of these initiatives can be addressed very, very well.
Pearl, I have another question.
I was just going to say to Bob, to that point, as much as we're doing all these things, Jody's city housing, you know, is bolting on to what we need and, and MCC's bolting on and the, and the county community services. Because we couldn't do it efficiently and we, we certainly couldn't do it if we weren't being highly collaborative in our partnerships. The beautiful thing is there's a whole bunch of people that are trying to make change and when they come together, really good things happen.
Sure.
Oh, please. Andy Johnson, executive director of the hospital. And I just want to add what I love about Charlotte and what you're seeing here with everyone here is it does take partnerships in order for it to happen. And there are not enough resources in our community if we don't partner together. Work historically, you see competition in our community. You're starting to see partnerships take place. And to address the root cause is the biggest key that you have and that you see here. I would say from a healthcare standpoint, we know the social determinants of health is what it's going to take to make population health enhancement happen and truly pay for quality of services versus just fee for service. And it's going to take everyone in this room in each of the roles that we have today to make that happen. So to me, this is the new age of Muscatine and partnerships versus competition.
And I'd just like to say, you know, some of the questions that you have about, you know, the homeless and, and the support that we provide to people, you know, we don't have that component to work individually with folks. And that's what we partner with and other groups to do. So that's so important.
Budgetary. So if you can, what's your approximate yearly budget? And what percentage of your, is, is through, given to you revenue given to you through donations? You know, public support, not just the county or the state.
You bet. So to give you an idea, and this includes the 180,000 we just received for, that we'll be receiving for the rapid rehousing grant. So many of the dollars you'll hear within our budget are providing assistance to stabilize. It also includes monies that we received to, to begin the wellness clinic. So it's a little bit higher than some, but we're at about a million two. To give you an idea, about 14% of our budget, when you, when you break it down, about 14% of the budget comes from some county services, or county sources. And that includes the grants that we receive from you folks as well. We are on a 30, 40, 30. So we have 30% revenue, 40% grants and 30% donations is how our, our funding breaks out currently.
Breaks out like that.
We are, and Scott will tell you, we've got some great ideas how we can look at some new revenue sources that will hopefully allow us to be more stable. But then again, if we are, continue to be supported as well as we have been by the local community, we can even do greater things with that.
Are you fortunate enough to have any endowments or?
We have, we have built some endowment through the community foundation. We do have some dollars over there as well. And so we do have some access to some dollars that will come off that going forward. Wait, did Nathan say you were volunteering?
That's what I heard.
Okay, I'm sorry. Bonnie Nichols will contact you, Bob. No, but anyway, again, we're looking at how we shift those percentages even more strongly. But we're thankful because with, MCSA doesn't exist without the community support. And that's why we feel so strongly it's so important to make change for the community.
Thank you for, anyone else?
I think I heard earlier in your presentation that Muscatine County was short 900 housing units?
That's city of Muscatine.
Oh, that's city of...
That came from the city housing study. So they just commissioned that in September, I think, and that study came out. So for, we're 990 units short of affordable housing for those making $25,000 or less. And there's 2,400 households roughly. To give you an idea, because we were talking about that 30%, in the, across the city, 43% of all renters and homeowners are above the 30% for digging into their pockets a little bit deeper.
So have you talked with local landlords to see if there was, you know, some units available or?
We are, we are in active discussion with lots of landlords. Dr. Maharry and his wife have signed on to us to agree to lower the rent and accept Section 8. And we're trying to recruit more people into the Section 8 program for the city housing, as well as trying to go after maybe some properties that are less desirable and seeing if we could turn any of those into affordable housing options. And that's one of our, one of our ideas of going forward and making ourselves more self-sustaining is to go after that. It's, it's a huge vision for MCSA going forward.
Scott, a while back, some, a group of landlords, city officials, attorneys, real estate agents, a lot of different folks were kind of getting together and talking about taking a look at some of those distressed properties that maybe have absentee owners. Has there been any, I haven't heard a lot of progress. Has there been any progress in that?
Not that I've heard. I think the city is making progress with their 6578 program. And I think they're trying to be, get older some of those properties and redistribute them. I think it's a long process and it's still, it's kind of still in the court system as far as getting that approved. As far as landlords coming to with their properties saying, "Hey, you know, this is an idea." I'm out there talking about it every day.
What kind of obstacles are you facing in that area?
I haven't, getting people to say yes enough.
Well, sure.
Getting people to say yes enough. Some of the blighted properties, they are being maintained by, by owners that are outside of Muscatine. And so be able to track them down is difficult. And I think the length of time that it takes to be able to go access some of those properties. And you don't want any, you don't want any negative feedback from the community. So we got to make sure that everything's, everything's covered before you move forward with that. And every time I get the chance, I'm talking, seeing if there's anybody who's interested in coming on board. I've talked to Rebuilding Together, we've talked to Hack Act Humanity to see what we could all do to move this forward. Because as a community, if we can develop a strategy and push it, I think we can definitely drop that needle of the Alice report.
And to that degree, there's also some conversation regarding distressed properties going on at the state level. If that legislation passes, it may put some teeth into some of the conversations we're having on the local level as well.
So in that, did that housing study break out those 2,400 households? What does housing look like for them? How big, how much is the number about 400 a month, 500 a month? Is, they could probably spend 600 a month total. That's utilities, house, all that.
It did break it out, but they, they did point out that the, the average rent in Muscatine is $746, $767.
Something, yeah. Yeah, I just didn't know if there were, the demographics, is that single? Is there a percentage of that that's, you know, is it three-bed, two-bath? How big are these places?
I was going to say, and that's going to be calculated across the stra, they're going to stratify that across. But to your point, 400 is a number that you often hear when you start to look at affordable housing, depending on, again, how big the family is and what, what they bring from income, opportunities.
Have you looked, what's driving the inflated rate in Muscatine County for rent?
And unfortunately, when you have this kind of demand, it also means the quality of the housing doesn't have to be very high. And so we see a lot of people living in poor quality housing. Again, if we, I always say, no matter, we need housing across all wealth classes. This isn't just an issue for lower end. And again, if we need to have, we have 9,000 people driving into our community to work every day. We need to, and some of those are coming from county, I understand that. But if we could start to capture some of those, any housing increases is going to help the economy. It's going to help the tax base for the schools. And then on the other end, it starts to gap it a little bit and bring the prices down and the quality up for the lower end as well. So as we sit here and talk about affordable housing or workforce housing, we believe it's not just that that needs to be addressed. We believe it needs to be addressed on a larger scale.
Is one of the reasons you're finding people, finding it hard for people to say yes because of the turnover rate? I mean, with, because as a landlord, you would want stability and you're going to want long-term commitment. And with, you know, some of the folks that you deal with, that's probably not an option.
I think that's the general perception, but when you talk with landlords, they're seeing a very low vacancy rate. I think the answer is it's not known enough. I think the answer is, it's not known enough. Anybody who does sign on with us or with Section 8, they're pleased with the outcome. The initial shock of, okay, we have to fill out this paperwork and that paperwork, that's done, over with, and then later on, they become settled and happy and satisfied as landlords. I don't think the landlords that are currently operating, I don't think there's a need to move very much because they're full, they're full, and they stay full, and that's good for them. I just think we need more.
And they can price higher, you know, because of man's hire as well, where they might have to, as we've seen some landlords lower. But to give you guys an idea, Jody just left. We've got 340 vouchers available in the community for Section 8. We have a waiting list of over 400 households. You're two to three years out to be placed. And again, there's some stratification based on if you have children, if you're a senior and disabled, things like that, but your, the waiting list is 400. And I just confirmed that with her, I think, last week, so it's a real fairly recent number.
That new development is, probably doesn't scratch what's at 50, 60 units.
It's 52 units, 12 of those, or 13 are going to be for extremely low income, so those are project-based, so those would fit the needs of our very low-income clients. Now, our clients could qualify for another apartment within it, but you're gonna, now you're not paying 30%, you could be paying 40, 50, 60%. So again, we're happy because it's still 12 more units. What we see unfortunately is because the quality of housing is very poor, often housing is coming offline faster than we're putting anything on. So we're not even, I don't believe probably the zero hold on housing.
Yeah, for sure. And it's also noteworthy that a lot of these units are aging and not very efficient, which leads to our utility costs and our utility deposits, and what the county's paying for utility deposits, and, you know, so I think...
And I need to correct you here, the county doesn't pay...
Sorry, my bad.
That's okay. But, you know, we do assist people with their utility bills, and it's very rare that utilities are included in someone's rent, so.
And that's often what you see, is they're trying to choose between housing and utility. Try, they pay a little bit, and then to see when they get kicked out the fastest. But once they're off, it's very difficult because now you have double payment for utility, you have a housing down payment, you have the cost of moving, and sometimes we see them just being... You know, we had a housing impact session recently where we brought somebody down from the University of Iowa to speak, and one interesting thing he said is is the housing goes up, then people no longer can pay for that, right? So now they're having to move, and so they're moving to lesser housing. But, more importantly, often they can't afford to make that move, so then they're becoming unstable during that time. And it's just, it's just an interesting perspective on how, as it's jumping, people are jumping out, but they don't have the financial ability to make the next move down at this point. And again, some of that's deposits that are wired up front.
You know, one thing I would recommend if you're not already doing it, and maybe you are, I don't know how many evictions go through the court here every day or week, but, you know, the court in my experience is always very willing to do as much as possible to work with folks, to give them the time, or at least as much time as possible, to transition. Do you guys have like a stack of cards that the small claims judge can give a person who's getting evicted?
It's a great idea, we haven't given them a stack of cards, but I surely can.
Maybe that's, I think that should just be like an automatic referral to you guys in that.
Well, in our homeless prevention program, where we partner with the city and MCSA and the county, we address some of those folks that are on the verge of becoming homeless or appearing to be evicted or having their utility shut off. And that's one area that we have a good partnership. But, you know, I don't know how many more we would have from the courts, but they could certainly make referrals directly to MCSA.
One thing we do see is often it doesn't get to the eviction states or the courts because the landlord will say, I'm evicting, you were put a notice in the P. I believe the process has started, so they jump. That doesn't mean trying to communicate. We're actually part of the landlord group, so we have someone that meets with the landlords on a monthly basis from our homeless prevention, and Jody goes through city housing as well so that we can communicate with them.
You get the landlord to say, provide along with the notice.
Exactly. But to give you, just, and Nathan, you'll be interested in this because of the school board, but your peak quote with children are 17% more likely to be evicted than another household. So again, this is affecting the children on even a higher level.
Anybody else? Guys, I'd like to thank you for coming in, Charlotte, Scott, and all your board members, Jim, Angie, Bonnie, Jody, and Nami, Mike. You guys are doing great work, we appreciate it.
Thank you for your time, and thank you so much for your support, we appreciate it.
Eric, are you ready to follow that up? All right, next up, we've got, thank you. Yeah, we've got Items of Planning and Zoning Administrator Eric Cornis. First up is discussion of possible action to approve the submission of grants to county's application between the Muscatine County Board of Health and the Iowa Department of Public, Iowa Department of Public Health for well testing, plugging, and reconstruction activities in the amount of $30,612.
I'll have to say, I'm sure you're by now all familiar with the grants, the county's grant, we've operated for probably 10 years at least. Grant renewal time, so we put it on the agenda for you to approve me submitting the grant. The amount remained unchanged from last year, which, I think it was last year, not the year before, it bumped up by another about $5,000. So that's good, so it's $30,612 that we've received to reimburse for the cost of well testing. There's a limit for well plugging with well rehabilitation that's available too, but generally covers a good majority of those types of services. So with your permission, I'll submit that grant today, it's ready to go, and then I'll bring it back when they issue a contract and get approval, we'll sign the contract.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
And second, all those, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes. Anything else, Eric?
I believe so, other than I just mentally, you know, I'm gonna have another conversation with the Sheriff's Department about our panic button and security. We're currently without anything in our office, Keith's office, and we've just had some issues in the past with just security. Today's day, we'd like to keep them and getting something for them, and I know we should look into it at one point, so.
We have cameras, I'll turn to you.
We have no cameras inside, we have a panic button that's not currently functional. They were working with possibly an police and equipment out of jail to try and get everything to coordinate to downtown to appropriate law enforcement agencies, but, so.
Is that something we should ask JJ to look at and maybe look at a proposal?
Well, I know they went through and evaluated the different offices, and I believe everything's functioning down here now, and they looked at ours, but there was some roadblocks, some of it's, some time we've been out.
I know you guys have had a couple of situations in last year that have been a little...
Yeah.
People appear to be less stable.
They need to function.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think JJ's been out there, I see.
I don't know, last I know, the Sheriff's Department had evaluated the functionality of the ones that we had, and it was determined that there was some component that was needed. They were gonna look into it, but I'm just letting, I'm gonna get back together with them and see where that's at, but if I have your support, and if it's something they can't accomplish, I'd like to talk to JJ, because I know Keith would like to have it functional in his office as well.
I think it's a good idea.
I think Keith has JJ out there looking for his cameras. Do you still have a radio?
We do, we currently just have, right now, I'm after some issues. We had about a year ago with some irrational behaviors. We have a radio that has a panic button, it's a public safety radio, it's part of the new radio system that Muscomm got, that in the interim, it has a panic button that is tied in, so we could hit that, but it's not, it's not a long-term thing. So we have something, but, so, I think that's all I have.
Eric, one other question. Anything of note happening with fireworks sales this year?
Nope, nothing was changed at the state level. You know, in the City of Muscatine, they made some revisions, I think, tightened down the timeframe which people can display fireworks, limited it to a few days as opposed to the month of June. But nothing, we had no request for any temporary sale sites in the county. I think just, you know, market demand is high-traffic areas. You see them in the city limits of different towns. I don't know if any small towns, other than Muscatine, have them, but, you know, we have them.
Okay, next up in the business is discussion and possible action to approve an ordinance rezoning approximately 44 acres in 76 Township from A1 agricultural district to R1 residential on second of three readings. This is a roll call vote?
I'll move to... I just wanted a little bit of the discussion, so I just wanted to, again, say that I'm not opposed to the construction of a residence on this property, but I am opposed to the rezoning of this rural acres for possible subdivision status.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion to approve this second, this is roll call vote. Bob?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Matt?
No.
I vote aye, three to one, the motion passes. Next, we have discussion and possible action to approve the minutes of the June 25, 2018 regular meeting.
Aye.
So, we've seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next up, correspondence, start with Matt.
I did not have any, no.
Jeff?
I will list this as correspondence on Tuesday. Scott and I went to a levy stakeholders meeting at the Discovery Center. There's a plea out, and if anybody listening to this, for industrial or commercial property owners that are in the area, the 33,000 acres protected by the levy in Muscatine, that there's a questionnaire in the Chamber of Commerce, you can get it there. Muscatine Chamber has copies. What the Corps of Engineers is doing, a study, value study, to see if this project can be funded through a 205 program, it's called, and they need to have asset valuation of industrial, commercial properties. It's, you know, there's an assessed value, but it certainly is a drop in the bucket compared to processing equipment and such. And they're asking that business owners, this will be aggregated, there's no, it will not be, FOIA requests can't get to it, it'll be totally unseen by anybody that really... And it's very important for Muscatine, for our hopes to get this project. And if nobody's heard, the whole notion was after the, you remember the study that was done with the, the Corps did the study in the island area on the flood risk? And most people may or may not know, with the City of Muscatine and area businesses, they increased the height of the levy and freeboard down past Muscatine Power and Water, but it really had not been taken higher on down the levy. And that study highlighted that we got more damage coming upriver now because it wasn't... So this is an attempt to look at raising it to a 500-foot level all the way down. And, you know, they're throwing out numbers out around, you know, 10 to 15 million dollar project. So, really important that if we can get, and FEMA has, if it goes through this 205 program, FEMA picks up 65% of the cost. So it could be a really good thing for Muscatine County. And I encourage any business owner that hasn't seen it, there'll be a group that'll be trying to get these out, but if they haven't seen it, please fill it out, it's important, it's important to the taxpayer, it's important to protect our property value. Because if you think about the island in Muscatine and the potential of a flood, you lose your water, you lose your sewer, or you lose the water jobs.
And that's available, that survey's available through the Chamber of Commerce.
The Chamber has that, yeah.
And there's no danger that someone fills this out there, so...
No, no, the assessor will never see this, yeah.
Jeff, is that part of that study that the Corps was doing and on both sides of the river? Or do we have any update on what they're doing in Illinois or where they're at?
No, we don't, we, I don't know what they're doing in Illinois, I haven't heard that. But this was, you remember, we funded that study a bit ago with the dollars we matched.
That was fairly significant, that study was.
Yeah, it was like...
Four million dollars.
Yeah, I think we gave...
Twenty-five thousand.
We gave 25,000, industry gave a match, I think they raised, we raised 250,000 total, I think, for all the study, and that's been funded, and, so that's good.
Yeah, I can't imagine Illinois, first of all, they don't have the money, and second of all, all they've got on that side of the river is agriculture, they don't care. So, they're not gonna spend money they don't have.
Yeah.
But, yeah, but this is a different deal, like I say, a, they don't, they can take care of themselves.
It's a long way from Chicago. The Corps, the Corps is doing this, and, you know, but they're not doing it on their own. They're doing this because we are investing as a community to do that. So, it's not even by the goodness, but they've been very involved, and they were, it was a great meeting, and the Corps was, you know, very excited about it, very optimistic about it. But, you know, it's gonna be a challenge to get that valuation because it's an interesting math, how you go through that, so.
So, please do any more, we should repeat for our member of the press. We're encouraging, do you want to say, you said that?
Yeah, we're encouraging industrial, commercial property owners on what we call, known as the island, the area protected by the levy. There's a levy stakeholder commission was meeting the other day. They're asking them to fill out a form to give valuation. Basically, it's an estimate of property loss, inventory and assets at certain flood elevation. So, one foot above ground level, two feet, three feet, how much loss do you incur? They've got the buildings, that's not a big deal, assessed value, and they can, although it's a structure, but they really want, especially have processing equipment, because that's probably worth much, much more than the building itself. So, they're asking, and this will be aggregated, there's no individual, it doesn't go to an assessor, not gonna bother anything, so please fill it out, it's important for the community if they get a hold of it. And the Chamber of Commerce has that.
Anything you can do to encourage folks would be awesome. Okay, I don't have any correspondence, Bob?
Well, I didn't either, but we have the one come in for the whole board.
You do?
Yeah.
So we have an individual who wrote in, concerned about E. coli levels found in the Cedar River watershed. I don't know if you got it, Jeff, you've been the one, I think, on those meetings, if there's anything they've addressed, or anything you want to say about that?
No, I think that, you know, the water quality, you know, is a big issue in Iowa, and it's a big issue nationally in the river systems. And it's, you know, driven by, you know, colonization along the river and modern ag practices. And I think it's a tough problem, and people are working on it. So, about all you can say. You know, I think this was, you know, probably talking about runoff, but I think, you know, we got cabins built right on riverbanks too, the septic systems in there probably contribute to that problem as well. So, it's gonna be a tough one.
Okay, committees, Bob?
Yeah, I had basically two meetings last week on Tuesday the 26th for Milestones. One was the Foundation, which they're, and that's why I was so interested in this guardianship and so forth, because that was one of the things the state's been pushing, was the triple A's. The Foundation, we're gonna go ahead and give the money to Milestones, area of the aging, to cover the startup of doing that function, hiring a person, in fact, we've already hired a person, it's gonna do the outreach on that, make that happen. So, that was the basics of that particular meeting. The second meeting was Advisory Council, and of course, we advised them of that work, that effort, and then it was just normal feedback from the Advisory Council. That's the only meetings I had this past week.
Okay. Scott and I, on Wednesday the 27th, had a by-state commission, and amazingly enough, I think it was very timely, given our discussion today with Community Services and MCSA, that it talked about hunger in the by-state region. And they specifically broke it down on Muscatine County numbers. They found that in the county, 42,000 people, we have 4,000 people who are food insecure, and they find that is, you know, missing a significant number of meals over an extended period of time. So, you know, about 10% of our folks, including 1,700 kids, are missing a significant number of meals, and they calculate that meal gap to be about 600,000 per year that folks are missing. So, you know, it certainly dovetails with, you know... Was that, yeah, about, yeah.
Five hundred.
I think so, so I think it broke down to three meals a week. I think I did a little preliminary math, I think that's a whole day a week when you're not getting fed. So, obviously, that's a concern, and it's something they're looking to address. It was a great presentation, and, yeah. Jeff, did you have anything?
Yeah, on Thursday, the, would have been, I don't know, 20 or something. I had the Wheelie Board, Wilton Economic Development Group, lots of things going on, working hard on projects, and, you know, one of the things I find kind of interesting is, you know, the little uptick in the economy, the, all the economic development organizations are starting to field inquiries, so, haven't seen those in the past few years. Now we're starting to see them, or potential projects, every month we're hearing about. Every month we're hearing about a potential project or two. So that's a good, that's good news for the area. Hopefully it will continue to do well. That's all I have. Better not, not speaking.
Next up, uh, receiving the information with county employees. We are fresh out of county employees. So let's, uh, go ahead to the administration, uh, administration office. Nancy?
Uh, the first item I have is, is in your packet, you saw, you had a draft updates of the fixed asset, fiscal inventory policy and capital assets policy. Um, there's nothing, there's, there's no substantive changes in this. It was really just kind of cleanup. Um, we used to have a system where we use two different color tags. We, we stopped that system, so we addressed that in here. And addressed, we had some inconsistencies in, in dollar amounts that we cleaned up as well.
So we have, uh, would entertain a motion to.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we, uh, adopt those policies.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. Uh, is this a roll call or are we to, by?
Just paper.
And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. The policies are adopted. Also, next would entertain a motion to accept the June twenty-eighteen payroll claims.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Russian passes. Anything else, Nancy?
Um, yeah, a couple of things that I just kind of wanted to update you on and report. Um, we are fully live in the new software now. Um, we continue to have some challenges, I'd say, especially in the payroll area, um, with things that just weren't set up properly. But we're working through those. Uh, and then the other thing I just wanted to point out to you, you might have noticed, um, in the minutes that you approved today, that, that Leslie has started adding the full language of the resolutions right into the minutes. There was a law that passed that effective July first. The county has to publish at least a, a substantive, um, summary of what each resolution says. And, and there's been a lot of warning out there from attorneys about how, how you, how you, you know, would word that to make sure that you were providing all the information. And so, um, the decision was made, we'll just publish the resolutions in full. That is going to raise our publication costs a little, but, um, it's something that's required. They also, the law also required that if the county operates a website, that by July first, we had a place on our website, uh, where all those resolutions are posted as well. And, and so I'll report as of Friday. Well, our office made sure that's up and running and we have resolutions back. So it wasn't required until July first, but we put on resolutions back a couple of months.
Nancy, on the, on the payroll issues, did they not, where was Tyler, did they not have a project manager on their end?
They did. And we've, we've, um, we have a difficult relation with the project manager, I guess is the best way I can say that. And we've expressed our concerns. Uh, we have, um, status meetings every couple of weeks. And then we've also had transition meetings and, and we have discussed our concerns about that and continued to voice our concerns about that, um. Because we, we.
We weren't, we weren't the first implementation of the new software.
Oh, no.
It seemed we're a couple of years down the road. It's kind of puzzling to me how you would have somebody that far along and you'd have settings that you didn't understand well enough, the implications.
That's, that's absolutely.
That would cause payroll problems. That's just not acceptable.
That's absolutely been a frustration for us as well. Um, the person that we had on site as we went live, um, made a number, uh, there was a number of things that, that, um, he just moved forward and, and assumed they were set up right without really having us review that process. And so as we processed payroll since then, we found, well, no, they're not actually operating the way they should be, so.
Maybe not process their check.
It was a hiccup in the software, right?
You forget, maybe you forgot. That makes sense.
You just approved, what, a hundred grand?
Yeah. Uh, I just want to step back a minute too, because when we had correspondence, I, I forgot about something. I did get, uh, some correspondence. There was a lady that wanted to see a resolution that she felt hadn't been posted. It was, I think, like a year old, maybe, or.
Yes.
And anyway, Nancy took care of that for us. Made sure the lady got, also told her where she could go to look in the future for the postings of the resolutions.
And, and, and she was interested in, and when it turned out she was interested in much more than a resolution. She was, uh, interested in, this had to do with a unknown owner parcel situation. And, um, she, she was requesting stuff to the point where the recorder's office had to say, no, we're not going to do your research for you. You know, we provided, we, we provided what we could and pointed her in the right direction in terms of what else she might be looking for.
I did have a chance. I don't know if you reached out to Gary or Whitaker, but I told, I spoke with him the other day and I said, we would like to, uh, invite him to talk to the board. He'd be, he said he'd be happy to do that. Just give him a, a few days' notice and he'd come down and give his.
My intent is to do that when we get, when, when I get back from vacation and I'm sure I have a full board here.
Just a brief conversation, my brief conversation with Gary, he said, every piece of land in the United States is already owned. So there's no such thing as a unknown owner parcel. That's a figment created by a software system and an assessor's office. And he said, they just need to quit creating them. And I, and, and so I think that's the advice we're going to get from him. But he also, and we should probably invite the county attorney that same day if we come up with a date that works. And Gary says he can make it, because he said your county attorney shouldn't weigh in on this.
And Dale needs to be there too.
Absolutely. Yeah, my, my intent is, is when we get that meeting set up, I want to do it when I have a full board. Um, I can have the county attorney's office present, a representative from the assessor's office, um, the treasurer's office, possibly the recorder's office, and obviously the auditor's office.
He did warn you, you know, you may, you may get more history of land survey than you really want. But anybody knows, anybody that knows Gary is know he probably will.
He'll talk. That's all right.
And he's very tactical and he'll need all the details. So I think it's a, it's a good conversation to have for this board. So we all hear the same thing and then we can make a decision as to how we move forward.
Right, because this has been an ongoing issue and it would be, it's good that we get enough information that the board can make it.
Yeah, you know, as you think about it, you know, with this whole advent of GIS and technology, it has this perceived, uh, accuracy, which it really is not, it is not. It's, it's not, you know, I, I remember applying for a building permit and they were measuring the boundary lines on the property. And I'm like, well, you can't do that. There's stakes in the grounds. You got to measure those. You don't, that's a, that's an aerial shot. It's a mathematical interpretation of a picture. Doesn't mean anything. It's a, it's an approximation. So anyway, I think that's what Gary will tell us as well. So approximation from thirty thousand feet. Oh, that looks like my house. Either that or some bug on the window. I don't know. That may not be bad. I didn't get Mark here. Okay, that's all I have.
Anybody else?
I have a closing comment.
All righty, sir.
Um, I'd just like to wish everyone in Muscatine County a very happy and safe, happy Fourth, uh, Fourth of July. You know, we got to think a little bit. Now we got all these fireworks available to us and maybe think before we use or how we use. The other thing I'd like to comment real quick on is that anybody that was watching today, got an education, I think, on, on the Muscatine Center for Strategic Action and what they do and how they do it. And it was just a wealth of knowledge. And so I would encourage anybody that, that would like to donate to some type of worthy cause in Muscatine County, they may look at that organization and give that some thought. So that's all I have today.
Thank you, Bob.
Now, why don't we take about a ten-minute recess until eleven oh six?
I think that's loose.
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to catch you ahead of time. We're going to postpone, postpone that.
Do we need to table that or just?
All right.
This has been postponed.
Yep.
Let's go ahead. Andrew?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.